Council of the City of Banderas of March the 20th, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. Our council members of the President, City Attorney, City Administrator, the City Secretary, and Marshal of the District are all present. The second item is the invocation of special allegiance. Will?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this morning. First of all, I would like to thank you for your son who died upon the cross for our many sins. Secondly, I'd like to ask for your blessings upon this meeting as the council works together to implement strategies that help the city through this difficult time. Also, we'd also like to ask your blessings upon our great country as they deal with the difficult matters at hand. Lord, I'd like to ask you for blessings and mercy, and thank you for saving a messed-up center like me. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am pleased to be heard of a whole week we have been doing today. One, two, three, four, especially the possible action on the following items. A.
Did you check on the Zoom call? Did you check on the Zoom call if there was anybody that wanted to speak during this?
Nobody's signed up.
Okay.
Let me put this in.
Okay.
Okay, item A. An ordinance pursuant to Texas Health and Safety Code, Section 122.005, you take any action necessary or expedient to promote health and suppress disease, including actions to... And I'd like to take these one at a time in this festival.
Well, we're just, yeah, this is just a general taking off one because it's just the authority we're acting under. I've got a lot of information to discuss.
Okay, so let's just move on with the discussion.
So, and I apologize, but I've got multiple cities dealing with the same thing. One second. Um, I'm dealing with Mr. Z. Um, so, a couple of things. So, uh, just how, how did we get to this point? And I want to share with you some, some general information that we're dealing with in other jurisdictions. I apologize, I have not had a lot of rest in a while, so, um. Generally speaking, how, how we would get to a meeting such as this where y'all are looking at local measures would be a declaration either by a county judge or the mayor. The reason why cities and counties make those declarations, even if the governor has already made a declaration, is because you are going to incur costs during this. You're going to incur costs that you didn't budget for. And an emergency declaration allows you to recover those costs once those funds are made available through the federal government. And those funds are coming. We don't have specifics on those yet. TML will push that information out to your administrator and to the council once they know that process. In the meantime, though, cities are taking these steps so that they can code supplies. You're gonna have, I mean, you know, you already have more cleaning supplies if you probably have, it's very fresh snowing in here, so clearly your staff is taking this serious. If you're gonna have costs for that, ultimately, you're gonna have personnel costs, there's little doubt about that. You have costs, legal costs, that you didn't budget for as far as how do you go about these steps. Those things, if coded properly, should be able to be submitted, as they are with any disaster, like when you flood or anything else, this is no different than those circumstances. You know, it's different in that we haven't seen a pandemic like this before, but I had clients along the Gulf Coast decimated by Hurricane Harvey. Businesses shut down for months, some of them never reopened, they shut down for months and months and months. They had orders just like the governor issued, but they were just specific to that region. So, the difference here, and when I was with the City of Abilene, we multiple times had to declare local disasters because of flooding. And when those things happened, yes, we forced people to evacuate, yes, we shut down businesses, yes, we regulated price gouging, we did all those things because we declared an emergency to give the local governing body or the mayor, the county judge, that authority to do so. So, regardless of what takes place at a statewide level, there's reasons why local jurisdictions need to do that. And the other reason for that, that's one reason, the other reason for that is because it gives your citizens, it eases them a little bit, gives them confidence, they know you're on top of it, they can go to the local resource to try to get answers. If you've read the governor's order, you all should have copies of, he's very broadly worded. Now, in his press conference and later in his town hall, the governor went through a discussion on finer points and tried to answer questions. TML is pushing out interpretations daily to their communities. They're pushing out guidance. We're working with them every day to try to give the best legal advice collectively to people that aren't our minds, and we're trying to get information out as efficiently and directly as possible. The other thing that, to keep in mind, is that emergency authority is found in Chapter 14, and you'll hear that a lot. That's where the governor, that's the authority, where he declared the disaster, that's, that's the same chapter that a county judge or mayor can act. But that's not the only provisions found in the statutes that allow for steps to be taken. Because the, the state health authority has declared a statewide medical emergency, then you can act under Chapter 122 of the Health and Safety Code, which is why we posted it as 122005. This, 122005 is specific to general law municipalities in the state of Texas. What you see on your agenda is right from the statute. Those are the things that the legislature has said, that in the event that this is declared, these are the things in the areas which you can regulate. Now, unlike counties, cities regulate typically by ordinance. And the reason why you would do an ordinance instead of just, well, we're gonna say we're gonna do this, or we're gonna make an announcement, you do it by ordinance because you can enforce an ordinance, it is law. So, the governor's statewide declaration has a lot of prohibitions in it, I apologize. But there's not an enforcement mechanism within the governor's order. If you want to enforce what he has put forward with your employees, with your personnel, with your marshals, then we need to pass it, pass an ordinance that says what that's going to be on the local level. Now, disobeying a, a health, a health authority's declaration can be punishable by, you can, yeah, six months in jail, I'm not recommending that, you do what's right here. I don't think, I mean, that's y'all's decision, right? We want people to abide by whatever you decide here, and we certainly want them to abide by what the governor has stated. And we hope that we can educate folks enough on the dangers and the risks that they do that willingly and voluntarily. No one likes to be told you can't be open for this business, or that you have to only do, take home or delivery. But again, the analogy I use is that none of my clients in Rockport and Port Aransas, they didn't want to shut down either, they didn't have any choice. Natural disaster was coming their way, they boarded up and they left. Right? It's just, we can't see this, so we don't have that same fear and trepidation. The other thing I want to, and I'm, again, I am not the health authority, I am not a medical professional, so I am not claiming to stand here and be one. I have statistics that I'm provided that I'm just relaying. But understand that a lot, I've heard this a lot, because I've had this same conversation in probably a dozen cities at this point, that, well, there's no positive tests here. Well, when we get one, when we get one, we'll do this, we'll do that. You don't have testing going on. There's not enough testing taking place, but less than 6,000 people have been tested in Texas, in the entire state. And they are testing positive very frequently when they are tested. I could give you a list of transports that have happened in the last 24 hours in this general area around San Antonio. Those tests, we won't have those tests for days. But if you test positive, let's say you start feeling mad after this meeting, and then by Sunday you go in and are tested, maybe by Wednesday you'll have the results back if a test was available. How many people do you come in contact with from the time you left this meeting until next Wednesday when you get that test? Because that's how community spread happens. When this first came to Texas, we were talking about where people traveled from, but San Antonio already has community spread happening, and what the nationwide statistic shows, this is doubling. So, it's doubling every two days, the number of positive tests. Even as the number goes up, that number is doubling again. So, it is serious. There are things that we can do to slow it down. You don't have the facilities in Banderas County to accommodate a spike in patients from here, obviously. They're going next door, right? They're going to Bear County. Bear County and San Antonio specifically is not going to be able to handle that if every community is sending folks in. So, we had a medical professional addressing our council a couple of nights ago, and they have a plan, that's the great news, is that medical professionals trained for this, they planned for this. But understand too, that those plans also include, they're already talking to hotels, they're already looking at convention centers, they're looking at places where they can triage, where they can set up emergency hospitals, to plan ahead for, not for the COVID patients, but for being able to move people out of the hospital who are there with less serious conditions into a different facility or some area, so they can treat those who need an emergency bed and a ventilator. There's not enough emergency beds, and there's not enough ventilators. There just isn't nationwide. If this is not kept down, it's not kept below, that's why you keep hearing everybody talking about leveling it off and keeping it below critical mass, is because of the facilities. Now, the truth is that, and you've read this, and it is true, that a lot of people don't even know, and they test positive. Those are the most dangerous people walking among us because they're asymptomatic. I have four children, and they're all teens or in college, and they could probably contract this, and it may not knock them down at all, they might have a low-grade fever, but to our neighbors who live around us and who are adults, they come in contact with them, it could be death. Just depends on how people react to that, which is why they've taken the steps they take. You heard the governor say that he didn't take this lightly, and that's true. Every morning for more than a week now, every, every county judge, every mayor, every EOC director across this state has been able to go onto Web EOC at 8:30 in the morning, if they're registered with Web EOC, and hear the latest news and latest events. That's how they're pushing information out, they're providing it daily. The president is providing information daily as well, but your local information will come through those other avenues. The reason why you've seen the City of San Antonio and the City of Bear, and Bear County act decisively and repeatedly in a short amount of time before orders even expired is because of the information they are receiving. Right? So, they are, they are getting daily information that is causing them to take further measures. The great thing about Texas is local control, and our governor, for as long as he could, tried to allow local control at the county and the city level. Unfortunately, he was seeing that too few counties and too few cities were taking the measures necessary, so he did it statewide on some issues. May not be all the issues that you need to address here, and that's why that reason, in addition to the funding that could be available, is why I pushed out an emergency declaration ordinance to you last Friday, so you could consider it, so you could look at that and see if it was right for your community. Not, it's not right for everybody, but at this point in time, we're here again because we've got an emergency meeting called, so y'all can entertain those things once more. Now, I just cited the statute on here. I am not standing before you telling you that you need, you don't have the staff or the personnel to go 10 miles from your city and start policing people, or five miles from your city, that's statutory language, okay? But this is the authority we're gonna act under. What we're trying to do is take measures, put measures in place that prevent the introduction, right? So, what can we do to do that, and the spread? The way I have suggested this and approached it, because I hadn't had to do one such as this, so the council acted directly, is two things. I've got two exhibits for you. Did you, Jill, did you give them the one I pushed out to you this morning?
Yes, it's in the second packet.
Okay, so there's two things that you have in your packet. Exhibit A is just the governor's declaration, I put that as an exhibit A because if you want to enforce that through your ordinance, we need to have it as an exhibit to your ordinance and your authority. You're saying the governor's order is gonna control within our city, and we're gonna enforce it within our city. Exhibit B are specifics, because the governor's A lacks the specifics that are in B. He's got a general order, whereas B implements a lot of the CDC regulations and recommendations. And the reason for that is because, obviously, the governor is going out statewide, he references these same, these same recommendations in his order. He, he referenced the president's guidelines as well as CDC guidelines. All exhibit B does is verbalize what those guidelines are, so your citizens, if they look at the action you've taken, they have specifics that they can reference. I've also added bullets at the bottom, or not bullets, another section at the bottom that's blank. The section at the bottom that is blank is for you as a community, for you as a council to decide ahead of time what you are willing to do, or empower your city administrator to do for your citizens. Okay? And I say that because here's, here's what's likely to happen. If, it's a big if, if we move to a shelter in place order in the next month, honestly, I don't think it'll be, but if we move to that within a month statewide, okay? Then, there's, not everybody can work from home, I'm blessed that I can do so, I can help you all from my home office if I need to. Not everybody can do that. There are, already been a lot of layoffs, there's going to be more layoffs, citizens have to make tough decisions. When those things happen, and you're deciding, do I pay to have groceries delivered from Lowe's? Do I pay to have some food brought to my family? Do I pay for these other things? Or do I pay my water bill? Do I let my taxes float a little longer? They're not, they're gonna make the decision they have to make. So, what a lot of cities are doing is putting their minds at ease a little bit, not enforcing cutoff rules, not charging late payments, we're not giving them a gift, this is a public emergency, serves a public purpose. They will pay, okay, eventually, on whatever terms that y'all decide today or a future time as far as payments, or whatever you want to do. The other thing that some communities are doing is they're reaching out to their EDC, and they're partnering with their EDCs for this reason. There are going to be, they don't have details released yet, if y'all keep it up with this, you know that the federal government is, being the federal government, they're quibbling over details, but they will get something in place. Part of that package is gonna involve stopgap lending for small businesses to the small business administrators, right? That's a federal program, it comes out, it's administered by the state, your local businesses can qualify for that. The EDC can help them with that process, and the EDC maybe, and I don't know what kind of country EDC is, but it is eligible to do the same kind of loans on a shorter term, on a local basis, in small enough amounts, just so people can keep, we want your businesses to stay open. We want them to keep being able to deliver food at their restaurants, we want them to deliver groceries if that's an option. All of those things need to happen for your folks, we don't want people panicking, the more normalcy they have, the better, and the better for your businesses if they have an opportunity to keep those doors open. Now, we're not gonna be able to fix all that today, but you can put this in here as that is a program that you support and that you are asking the EDC to work with, the city administrator, to bring back to you, because those rules have not been suspended. The governor has suspended a lot of rules, as we'll talk about, he's, that's why we're meeting like this, he's relaxed the Open Meetings Act rules, he's relaxed the Public Information Act rules, and there are several other rules that y'all have to abide by that he has relaxed. Those have not been done as of yet for the EDC guidelines, right? It still has to be a project, it still has those. We have asked for that waiver, okay, along with many other waivers, not just, not we, not my firm, but we, the attorneys who represent cities in conjunction with TML, have asked for a series of waivers. He's got bigger things to deal with, but he'll get to that eventually, if this goes forward, I do anticipate we'll have some of those. But the time to talk about whether or not you're interested in that, and whether or not your EDC is willing to look at that, is probably now. We need to know the funds available, what that loan would look like, and I don't represent them. So, all I can do is suggest it, and then they can get with their attorney, and they can study what they think is gonna come down the pipe on those, those loans, small business administration loans, and see where that, they gotta do the gap, right? There's gonna be a gap in there, or there's gonna be things that aren't eligible maybe under the SBA program, that they can fill and make sure that we keep businesses open. That's, that would be the goal. The other, pardon me, the other things that you need to look at on the local basis, so, everybody talks about, and, and we know that Easter's coming up, right? And I know that you have a large event out here typically at your park on Easter, it's usually packed, and I think you have an Easter egg hunt maybe, or something, so I get, I'm getting confused, I have a lot of community events in a lot of communities, but that's prohibited, that would be prohibited, right? That's, that's, but that doesn't mean you can't creatively think, or what are the alternatives? What can we do? You need to do something perhaps. One of the things the governor talked about yesterday is that, you know, he strongly encouraged places of worship to follow the CDC guidelines, and most that I deal with are, and it applies to places of worship. But one of the things to be considering or put out to your community is your Easter services, what are y'all gonna do about those? How are the churches gonna handle those? Have they considered, at a large outdoor venue, if the weather's beautiful, you know, at your local football stadium, you have two of them to choose from, you know, is there a way to get people socially distanced enough where they can still feel a sense of normalcy without impacting each other or spreading something if it's here? Those are just things to think about. That is all at the local level and local control. Nobody is saying, hey, just ban everything, and there are built-in areas for exceptions and things that we can do. Restaurants are closed, just the inside dining, they can deliver, they can deliver alcohol, you know, they can do curbside. There are still rules, though, in the TABC, I think I, I was on my phone last night, I sent it to Rebecca, I believe, because I, because of, yeah, the chart, that chart is current. That is the chart with all the waivers and all the provisions in there that needs to be pushed out to your restaurants locally so that they know, because it's all about what license they have, right? He made waivers, but not everybody, just because you are a restaurant and a bar doesn't mean you're gonna be able to do it, you have to have the right license. My understanding is TABC is expediting changes, amendments, things to get everybody where they can provide that service, but that's something your businesses need to actively do, it's not something the city can fix for them. I think City Hall, you need to give direction today, hopefully, to your, to your city administrator, if they haven't already done this, about limiting in-person payments, public access, you need to talk about at what point, you have a fairly small staff anyway, but if you go to a skeleton crew, which is recommended, you're gonna have even fewer. But you need to talk about that. The other thing that does, if you have a skeleton, if you formally go to a skeleton crew, that does not count as a business day under the Texas Public Information Act. That's just a little side note, that was pushed out to Jill, so once you formally do that, basically, there won't, that takes that off their plate, they're not gonna be dealing with public information act requests for the most part on those days, and if every day is a skeleton crew day, it doesn't count as a business day. So, it's gonna suspend those responses until you're back to full staff. I sent out to, I think Jill would have received it, the federal guidelines for your personnel, for your employees, how you're gonna pay them, what is eligible, what isn't, what's been suspended, what hasn't, what the new guidelines are for leave, you should have received that. Clarissa Rodriguez is, is our point person on all the personnel issues, as you have questions about that. And again, I don't want Jay and the council worrying a whole lot about, well, they don't have that leave, what if they use all their leave, what, I mean, how are we gonna pay them? Again, that is what the funding that is going to be made available is going to do for you. It's gonna reimburse your, your general fund for time lost, manpower lost, or days lost to the disaster. It's just important that you code everything in that manner, so it's, when it's audited or if it's looked at by the government, you know, like, for me, when you see my billing, this will be an emergency meeting to deal with this, that's how it will show up on there, that's eligible, that would be. If they treat this disaster like every other disaster that I've worked on, then those expenses should be recoverable. Now, I am not with the federal government, so I cannot bind them to that, hopefully, that's where they're headed, though, and that's the purpose. And I think that's the guidance that TML has provided for the declaration. If you have any events that haven't already been postponed, that's something that you should do, the governor's order says that, you will be able to enforce that, it's also in what you would pass today. So, any of those large events that we need to be, anything over the guidelines, any public social gatherings of more than 10 people.
And what time is it?
Midnight tonight.
I mean, it's April 3.
30 days, he said April 3. I put, I put 30 days in your ordinance, and, you know, a lot of, some, like, Bear County's extended theirs to June. I haven't done that, because this is changing so quickly, you might have to go more strict. So, I'm just doing my councils 30 days at a time, or meeting to meeting, however they wanna do it. Most of them are looking, and 30 days was just a space holder on here, look at your meeting dates, your regular meeting days, which granted, I recommend you move to telephonic meetings, but pick one and set that as your date, that this would expire one day past that, so that if you need to come together, then you can extend it 30 days at a time, 60 days, whatever you need to. When I say come together, hopefully on a telephone. I really don't want to be calling out to meetings anywhere. I'll be by telephone, whether anybody else is or not.
Dan, April 2nd would be two weeks, basically, and April 16th would be four weeks, so we're, those are our two April dates.
Right, and so I was at a meeting last night that has the same meeting dates as y'all, and that's what they did, they went with April 16th as the date that their order would go to that they passed last night. So, on your, where it says 30 days on there, you can actually put in the specific day of April 16th, or April 17th, so they're gonna be together on the 16th.
If in the meantime, the government, the governor or the state's level off, so about, can we, if we leave this order, make it for 30 days, can we amend it in 15 days and say, hey, it's calming down, we can do this or that over the par for?
Of course, of course, local control, yes. If you, if, if, if one of these experimental things that they're rolling out tests is great, and all of a sudden people start getting cured, absolutely, it's an ordinance, so you can repeal it at any time, that you need to, or you can amend it at any time that a meeting occurs at the council. Nobody wants to be stricter than they have to be for any longer than they have. It doesn't benefit the community, it doesn't benefit the city to do that. It's solely because, if it's a public health disaster, that anyone is doing this at all, and the time to do it is before you have a widespread problem.
Thank you. Where, where?
Do you wanna call on Lynn?
Oh, yes, Lynn, where, where is the 30-day language in this ordinance? I haven't counted yet.
Okay, so there's two places that we would need to change it, I believe, let me look real quick.
I've kinda skimmed over it, but, yeah.
So, let's do this, so in your ordinance itself, initially, because I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle this, I wrote it to coincide with, with Governor Abbott, and any renewal, renewals or extensions that he has, for A, you can always be stricter than the state, you can't be more lenient, but let's do this instead, let's, let's see, grab a pen real quick, can't do it in my head, I'm limited.
The first packet with the, agenda on it is where the ordinance was, and the, or Governor Abbott's saying, the other packet was all stuff that he said was for review.
I see it on Exhibit B.
Okay, so, so, right, so, but, so my recommendation would be, on the ordinance itself, Section 2 says that the state public health emergency is prepared, like Governor Abbott has recognized as controlling within Banderas now, and is it maybe renewed and extended, I would insert after that, by the city council at its meeting of April 16th, 2020, including all rules and regulations attached there, too, as Exhibit A. And B. I wrote that out, Jill can change it. And then the other place that occurs is in the new, where's my new, where's the new exhibit, Jill?
In the second packet.
That's cute. That's okay, though.
In the thicker packet, yeah. Is that what you're referring to, is the second packet, Jill?
Yeah, I have all mine together, exhibit, the ordinance and exhibit B.
Okay, so that's the one I'm looking for, because there's language in exhibit B that we need to change as well. We have some other things we need to talk about, too. So in exhibit B, though, we need the same language, where it says thirty days. Instead of thirty days, it should mirror the language in your.
And number two.
Yeah, I'll have that in a second. Yeah, so where it says continuing for, da-da-da, continuing for thirty days. It should say continuing until April 16th, 2020. Here's the language for this part. I've got all handles. No, it's okay. Unless they have, no, because when they talk about what they wanna add, just write it down on the blank sheet. Pretty warm. Okay, so any other questions on the ordinance itself? I want, I wanna talk about a couple of other things, because there would be things that you would add on local recommendations. One of the things that I, I, I pushed out to, to the communities in Anacostas County yesterday is you already have, you should already have mutual aid agreements for first responders through the different, the shares, yeah, the deputies, your marshals, and other communities. But that, that's not gonna cover everything that you might need to cover. So, and I don't know who, it doesn't have to all be within your county. You can reach out to Curville, Bernie, any communities that are within a certain radius. What the multi-city interlocal would do would be allow resource sharing and personnel sharing among those cities. Because here's what can happen. If you get a positive test within a small staff, they're all pointing. You, you're now done. You're shut down completely. You need essential functions to continue. It could be your water and su, public works department, all right? Not just City Hall, but your public works department. It could be your marshals. It could be any of those things. You need a, something in place that dictates what are those rules? What happens when that happens? It's better to have that in place between all those cities ahead of time so that they know, if you call them up and say, my city secretary is down, I need help. Do you have anybody that can help me? The rules are already, of engagement are already in place. How's that person gonna be paid? Who's gonna be responsible for benefits? For how long? How's all that gonna happen? Again, all reimbursable on the back end between the cities, and if you have a disaster plan in place from the federal government. Resources, supplies, if you run out of toilet, and this other city happens to have the jumbo rule, by gosh, give us a couple. But you chart all that. You keep, you keep track of what you, the resources being exchanged. It's under, it's just like any other interlocal agreement that y'all already have or have had before. But in that county in particular, all the cities decided, we're all gonna do this, we're all gonna execute this. The governing bodies have to approve it, obviously, but that allows that, it's just peace of mind, right? Jay knows if something happens, he has people to reach out to who've already agreed to help him. And so it's just something to consider. I sent that to your staff already. It's not on the agenda tonight. It, if you have any special call meetings by telephone in the near future, I would, I would recommend looking at that. You can look at it at any time. I did not make one for Banderas. I sent you the one I made for this other community. It's yours. You know, do with it what y'all need to do. Share it with other communities. I have no problem with that. Not right now. I don't have an issue with that. Get it out to them and see who you can get on board to help you out if you need it. The other decision that you have, that you can make or not make, it is entirely up to you, is the postponement of your election. It can be postponed to the November election. Or you don't have much. I mean, don't worry about that, then. You can throw that piece of paper away. There you go. Boom. Y'all's is already in November. Okay. That takes ten minutes away that I don't have to worry about. I can't keep them straight. I just go, don't, don't judge me for not remembering your elections during, in May.
Thank you for being here.
Let's see, what else we have? Okay, so the, the Open Meetings Act, you have the rules that have been, as they've been. We, we did a line through for you so that you could see specifically. I would encourage you to share that with your local media so they know what rules that apply and don't apply. I don't, I don't want you guys being accused of doing something you're not authorized to do. The governor suspended a lot of these rules for public health concerns. It's not because he's, once y'all did not do stuff that they, that aren't open to the public, we're just gonna have to accommodate it publicly in different ways, whether by video conference or by teleconference. I prefer the teleconference simply because it doesn't lend itself to as many glitches. It's not because I don't look good on video. Well, okay, maybe it's that, too, but mostly it's that, there's less glitches. I advised Jill to reach out to Barrow's Ranch, because they found a really, really good system. And I'm not advocating that system. I don't even know the name of the provider. I just know it, it's turnkey. They'll set it all up. They'll provide the secure numbers. They'll record it. They'll provide the recording to the city. It's charged by the minute, so it may not be the best, but again, you'll be able to recover that down the road. But there are other options as well. Look for any communication coming from our firm with multiple providers that y'all can contact and see about. Because there are more, there's more than one. We're not promoting video. Just that they're good ideas. It'll work better than just a free conference, setting up a conference via Microsoft or whatever that you can go into. They'll work better and they'll record. The video conference rules are a little harder to accommodate. The teleconference, they've suspended all in-person. There's no necess, it's not necessary at all to have anyone present at the meeting other than your staff. Yes, sir?
Any reasons, options such as go-to meetings or any of that would not work?
It's, it, there's, no. If it meets, if it meets the teleconference requirements and there's bandwidth requirements, I'd have to go through and see if those have been suspended and things such as that. In my experience with those, in, in more rural settings, or here, it's your hills, the beautiful hills, they, they create issues with having a consistent signal that would cover that. There's no reason, though, you're correct, that that wouldn't be possible. But the traditional video conference rules, it would be almost impossible because of the requirements for the, to accommodate the public. Whereas anybody can participate in a teleconference meeting, any citizen, so long as they have a phone line. And so they're not limited by having to participate via video conference. I think it's more inclusive. All right. Any other questions? It is a lot of information, and I've kinda covered everything in one fell swoop. But, but really, I think for you locally, what you need to decide is, number one, is the governor's order strict enough? I think most communities have said it is. That's up to you. But second, if you want to include any of the local authority, so Jay can, has permission to do things that he normally would not have the permission to do without coming back to the council, now's the time to do that, just for the duration of this. And by that, I mean, like, the cutoffs, the late payments and things, you know, how you want him to deal with your personnel, skeleton crews, you know, building permits, how are those gonna be issued? You can do it by just simply giving him broad authority to do those things. But I, I, I think Jay and any other city manager or administrator wants that, particularly in Taftay Journal and Miss Valley, wants that specific authority granted before they just do it.
And that's, that needs to go under exhibit A, item seven.
However many, yeah, I just stopped after like A, B, C, D, but it's, it's, that's where those would go.
And in addition, that the governor's executive orders identifies April 3rd, 2020 as.
He does.
As the end of this.
Right.
But we're saying April 16th.
Right. And so here's, here's why I say that, is because, because there's no danger. I don't, I don't, only is any danger of the governor lessening these restrictions. Right? And so I don't think you're gonna suddenly be more strict than the governor. The governor's gonna look at it on that date, and I anticipate it's going to be, if anything, it's going to be more strict or is just going to be continued. So unless you wanna just meet again then, your, your regular meeting is before he's gonna issue that. That's why I put it at April 16th, because if he does something on April 3rd and y'all wanna then call a meeting, you could do so and address it.
I was thinking that we would go by the order of the governor.
Me as well.
It's really, but I, I thought, just because of.
But that's fine, as if we do it now, we don't have to meet again on the 3rd to extend it. If we go to the 16th, but if we meet on the 30th, he says, okay, don't go to the park, then we will just simply amend this or repeal it.
Yes.
And take it out of effect. In fact, I think it takes out one more potential meeting which would extend it longer than the governor does. I don't want to be shut down for a month, you know, but still, just whatever y'all think is fine.
The timeline being projected is, is that this is not going to, this is, we have, we have about a hundred and twenty-day window. And give or take, and we're in about, or probably about five weeks into it.
That's pretty much what I was gonna say. I think that April 3rd is gonna be a miracle. One way to put it, if we would be able to relieve any of these.
The other, the other factor to consider is that we're behind the rest. Like, where this has already come up, they're further ahead. So look to the cities that are dealing, are dealing with more cases, and the states are dealing with more cases, to see what lies ahead. So the shelter in place order in California went in place last night. They are probably one month further down the road than Texas is at this point. So taking these steps now, understanding that most probably that's where you're going to be in a month. I don't think we're gonna be looking at lifting all these things. But I'm not a medical professional. I'm just looking at the modeling that anybody can look at. Now, love to be wrong on that. And if they do, I'll be the first one to call an emergency meeting. Get y'all, but that's absolutely right. Absolutely. One hour's notice. Nobody's gonna complain that we met on one hour's notice if you're, if you're losing restrictions on that.
At this point, Dan, should we, as a council, discuss closing the park to, and, you know, restricting access to City Hall, and what, what do we need to do to create exhibit B? What do we need to do now?
Those are the things you should be discussing for your properties and things that you control. Because you've, you've told other businesses what they have to do, where the governor has, and y'all are reinforcing that. And so, yes, for your facilities, you need to do something that advises your staff what your intentions are.
So I haven't seen where the governor has said anything about places of worship, like the church is not. I haven't seen where he's.
What he said, okay. What he said was, he wanted, he talked around it, and don't, don't quote them. I don't have any beef with the governor. He talked about that separation church and state, and, and that he would certainly hope and recommend that, that they abide by that, that his order is silent as, as to the capability to places of worship. That's why I said earlier that most of the communities were, I have spoken, they reached out to the church. They're doing it themselves.
And if you take his declaration or order literally, I mean, he's saying no groups larger than ten, so.
I understand. Social gathering, he did say that.
They were all in there.
And then he, and then, but what he verbally said, and I'm with you.
Yeah.
Take, it's, what does it say literally? Now, locally, you can, you can be more strict, I think. Voluntary compliance, those, those are who you want leading this charge, to be honest with you. Because, you know, for a lot, I, I know when my parents were living, you know, that, you know, that is, that sense of community, that sense of, that's where they have their social interaction. It's really hard to let go. It's hard for churches to, to recommend that. They're the ones who need to lead on it, because that's the most vulnerable population. If they do a voluntary, the government telling the church to do something doesn't go as well as the pastor saying, we need to do this so that we're all here when this is over.
That's really the reason for a lot of these orders from the government. He gave cities a chance to do it on their own and saw that there wasn't enough of it. Ball carries over to these other areas, too.
So if, if I'm reading this right, if we, if we decide to include these places of worship, then our law enforcement can enforce these places of worship to only have ten people? And I just don't know if I, I mean, I would like to see them comply on their own.
Yeah.
But it, but, you know, worship is.
That's all.
A lot of them are praying that this is gonna be over with soon.
Again, I go back to my earlier example on, on disaster declarations when there's a hurricane. Yes, you want people to comply. And at a point, the, the government's not gonna go in and get them if it, if it doesn't go well for them, right? You're not gonna arrest you. They're not gonna disprove the lie. But, but, you know, very few, very few arrests are made in those circumstances because your officers always have discretion. And your officers here have proven that they, they, they're, they're fine to exercise their discretion. I would not place anything in here that takes that discretion away.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Time permissions, or what do we, what?
I think we'll be to identify.
Yeah, we need to have a little bit more.
To damn seven.
I just wanted to make a suggestion out there as far as the city park. And maybe we could just keep it closed and, you know, use the same rule that we do on wet days, let's close, let people walk in by foot. But the pavilions, which would encourage large gathering, close those off and barricade them or whatever.
Go ahead, Lynn. I, I'm gonna agree with Glenn on this. I, I would like to see the city park remain as it is. There is a way that people can distance themselves from, you know, visiting the park. And it may be the only thing that's available for people to go to with their, with their children if, if they want to take the, take the day. I was even thinking about not charging on the weekends. Are we not charging yet? No, when is that start?
Week before Easter.
A week before Easter.
So that's probably gonna happen.
Okay.
I would agree with Lynn, though, in just keeping the, the gates closed.
We could phrase that as close it to the vehicle traffic. And folks won't climb over and go in and fly.
Yeah, because the sides are no longer there that you can't cross the cane.
Do we really need to barricade off the pavilions? Could we just not, could, couldn't we just stick to the ten-person rule? And.
In a pavilion?
Leave it up to the law enforcement to enforce it. And that maybe is where we'd like to hear some feedback from Will.
And Tony. Tony might have something to, to contribute as well. Will?
We, we can certainly stop by and tell them. I, I haven't really yet here if we're gonna, any interest in putting the penalty section in this ordinance. I'm very hesitant on that. And I think, I think you probably wanna agree. I, I don't, I'm not a, not a, not a proponent of putting the penalty phase in there. And I'm hoping that.
The reason why it's in there is because you already have a general penalty clause in your city code. And so this ordinance, as, as with any penal ordinance, would fall under whatever your general penalty is. Again, you know, under, understanding that serious violations of a statewide order are actually harmful, plus expensive, Jill, you've probably heard that on the news. Most of the cities that I'm dealing with are just keeping it at a classy level under their general provisions of the code. And that's for that, that's for that person who's blatantly disregarding. Because without that, granted, you hope you never have to enforce it, and you never have to write a citation. But if someone's blatantly endangering other people by doing, engaging in reckless behavior, if you have that one business that is not abiding by the governor's order, this allows us locally to enforce the governor's order, but this we've adopted.
Yeah, I've generally been telling a few people that ask that I would expect the attorney general's office to be prosecuting them after that more than at a local level.
They don't do. Yeah, but they don't. That's just sitting there. Attorney general relies on local prosecution.
It's the, the fair of versus the.
True. True.
But I, I certainly wouldn't have any problem having the guy stop by and say, hey, guys, there's thirty of y'all here, can, we need to spread out. As far as we have the park open, is to try to let folks use the park in this time, but we need to spread out, and we, we wouldn't have any problems.
Yeah, what we don't want is, is the scene happening in Florida during spring break at your park on Easter. People are blatantly disregarding the closure of the beaches, because they're young, they are bulletproof.
Counsel, do you want to restrict access to city hall as far as payments? Though folks will still have to get permits, and, and there's still be big business to operate, but should we encourage the use of drop box and online payment?
Yeah, I would like to hear what Jay has to say. I'm sure they've had the discussion, you know, about what's coming, and what do you feel?
We have, and me, myself, I'm in favor of closing the front. And most stuff can be done over the phone. There's gonna be a couple that can't be, but if it's that urgent, we'll find a way to get it done. For the most part, I would like to close off the front, deal with online and telephone at all possible.
And we have that drop-off slot as well.
Right, and there, there is some people that still pay with cash, but as long as we're here, they can come drop it in the slot, we can take the cash and make change right then. If all else fails, we'll open the window and deal it through there, you know, but.
And we have already also put on our Facebook page and the city website encouraging people to limit face-to-face contact with our staff, and we have had more people calling in and paying over the phone and things like that. And as far as the permit part goes, they can email their permit applications, and then if we need to have a one-on-one meeting, you know, with Jimmy or somebody to do that, if it's absolutely necessary, but.
Do we have fees attached for using credit cards?
We do.
Would we waive that?
We can, and, yeah, the best thing would be you come in and pay a bill, for example, we charge you two percent, then we could credit it back to your account instead of trying to just take it off right there.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I was still thinking too.
Just, do, do we need to be that specific in this item? Or is that the type of authority we can delegate to Jay?
You can, yes.
And allow him to make those types of concessions?
But I would, you can, and I would get from Jay the categories that, that he wants that authority. You see what I'm saying? So like, in the, in the waiver of, of late fees, card, card fees, the administrative fees, the, the cutoffs and things such as that, that y'all are empowering the city administrators to, to, to waive and use his discretion on when to enforce those provisions. You just need a laundry list of what those provisions would be also. But, but I would be specific, from the council's perspective of authority, with the pavilions and the park and, and property.
Okay, and we, we kind of stopped on the park, I think, prematurely.
I, I'm not sure where we stand on the park.
Um, okay, so going back to the park, if we're closing it to vehicle traffic, and I don't know what the consensus was in terms of, of closing off the gathering spaces, but thank you, Tony, for texting me. She says signage might mitigate liability, so if we need to put any signs up. And then, in terms of cleaning park surfaces, cleaning playground equipment, how?
Yeah, see, that's the problem. So, most cities are closed, there are parks that have equipment, because they don't have the staff to go out there and be cleaning that equipment constantly. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna create a potential hazard situation if you're gonna allow people to climb all over the equipment.
Can we, with, I'm sorry, go ahead, would signage cover us?
Uh, it's really not about that, right? So, number one, not necessarily. But secondly, it's really not so much a concern I have about liability for the city during this. It's about the community spread.
Exposure.
You know, you're taking action. That's more than some. So you're taking action to put things in place. People are going to either adhere to that or they're not. That doesn't mean that you're liable if they don't, if they choose any more of that, but you need to put provisions in place to discourage it. This is an ex, this is what I would consider an extreme exercise of police power. It's granted to you under the health and safety code. It's only to be used in times of emergency, that emergency is declared. Yes, sir.
Is there some way we could secure just the, those items, like the playground equipment, in other words?
It, it just depends, I can tell you, because I drove by.
Close that park down, but I understand the chance of contamination.
I drove by a school playground in another jurisdiction, and they had simply put caution tape, oh, they had wrapped it in caution tape and said, stay off, you know, that was there, because what else are you got?
Would, that would work, wouldn't it? I mean.
It sends a message, right? I don't wanna be the.
They would have to whip, and that's where law enforcement would come in. Removing anything like that would also be, not to put everything on it, Will, but removing anything like that would be tampering with city property.
We'd almost have to do it to the picnic tables, too, I would think.
Yeah, so back to the pavilions, you're probably right, we'd probably need to petition those off. I guess the first thing to decide is how open this is to everyone, that we keep it open.
What do you guys think about a, a sign or making the decision that the park would be open for walking only? Can we just make that statement, and would that be sufficient to encourage any, any other behaviors? No.
Oh, you know, I'm, I'm running people off the handicap swing at, at the park behind the robbery every couple of days, while, while their parents watch them, you know. I think that humanity right now is, in common sense, is pretty low, so I, if we let them in, we're, we're just trying to stay on top of it, but, you know, it's gonna be hard to keep them out of there one way or another, so I, I, I think we're gonna be dealing with it, probably regardless of whatever y'all decide, sort of, but, but bar, bar fans all the way around the park, we're gonna be getting.
I'm, I'm betting that we keep the park open, it's still a discussion, I think we keep the park open. And some way, ripping it off, whatever, the tables and everything else, and anybody that tries to remove any of that stuff, that's where law enforcement would come in.
I, I wanna agree with Rebecca on maybe just having a sign that says walking.
Yeah.
Walking traffic.
Yeah, educate, educate your folks.
Yeah.
The greatest degree possible.
Educate them.
But, you know, it doesn't hurt to, to wrap the equipment. It just, because here's the, here's the big concern that medical folks have is that, is that, you know, younger adults and children can be, can be carriers and, and never have symptoms, can be asymptomatic. And I, I think of the population it, it serves, and, and the folks over there, and, and taking something to, to the grandparents, you know, taking this virus inside there, is, is the spread that can happen. If it gets into a facility like that, it can be catastrophic and just devastating.
I just wanna say this about signage, in order for signage to be the least ineffective, somebody has to read it. And people are not really stopping anyone inside, and making big yellow, red, whatever you wanna do, but I wouldn't disagree with signage, I just don't think it's gonna be effective.
So put, put the signage.
No, great.
Put the signage on all the equipment and the tables and everything else, ribbon them off, or whatever mechanism would come to barricade. And that should, I would hope.
I, I think our responsibility is to inform and, and educate. We should, I don't care if we have one sign or ten signs, I think it should just be that we inform and educate, and then it's totally up to them whether, whether or not they want to comply. That, that's just how I feel about that.
Any thoughts on, and I realize without a gate attendant, this is not something that you're gonna see enforced necessarily, but it could help after the fact, if you guys chose to limit the park to county residents? And that would help discourage at least inter-county travel and people coming from infected communities into ours.
I, I would not be, I would not be for that at all. I realize we're in a situation, but who's gonna stand up there?
I, I'm not saying that, that it needs to be something that's police necessarily, but should something happen, or there is a gathering, or, or you have people from a known infected community coming into ours, because the CBB is encouraging it, that level, that, that there were something Will could do about it. And, and again, it's just a thought, might not be a popular one.
I think the gates should be locked, period, you know. People still gonna walk across that?
I did not contradict that at all.
They're gonna carry their eyes chest and all of that. You, you can't stop some of, but limiting to in-county people would be pretty difficult, I think. I think we would agree.
Except I do agree with you on that, but I think at least it gives us the ability to enforce that.
Again, if we're saying we're encouraging people to come into the city park to walk only, not to gather, i- it's just another, it's, it's just more teeth to, to run people off who, who are not abiding by that. And I think that we want citizens of our community to be able to get out in the fresh air and exercise and enjoy the beauty of the park. But we're not trying to have beer coolers and picnicking and, and things like that happening, right? I mean, that's what we're trying to discourage.
In groups, aren't we?
But what, like you said, we can be more restrictive in.
You can.
Situation, parks specifically. Yes, Will?
Maybe we announce that the park is only open for walking for groups smaller than ten people at a time, and maybe if that information gets out that folks from Barre County that normally come over here, just won't show up, and that kind of mitigates a lot of that problem.
If you're gonna leave, if you, if you're gonna leave the playground equipment open, you might, in your announcement or whatever, warn parents that it's not being cleaned and disinfected by the city. That's the other.
But that's relying on them, the kids to do the right thing, and they don't know any better. And that's why I say, we are gonna have it open, I think we do need to have some mechanism in place to barricade it off, whether it's even as simple as tape around it, something they'd actually have to remove to be able to use it, then that's obviously blatant violation. And that opens it up for law enforcement.
Yeah, I think as far as skate park, I think we need to, you know, just make sure that we adhere to the ten people.
And, and skate park doesn't seem, I don't see too many issues there. They don't, not too many surfaces. I'm not a skater or skateboarder. I, I don't think that there's anything really there for them to touch as they're going.
I don't agree with that, Jerry.
Well, see, and I don't know.
I go to skate parks all the time with my grandson, and they're.
Okay.
Climbing up it and sliding down it and touching it and sneezing on it, and, yeah, no.
Maybe this is something we do need to respect.
It's also about signage parks.
Okay.
Well, we don't have any authority over signage parks, other than the fact that it's in the city. But I think according to the press, we do, do we have. Sandage Park right here, behind city hall, is actually county-owned property. But it's in the city. Do we have any control over Sandage Park?
Sure, there's no, there's no, there's no control over it.
It's just ten or more.
Yes, Lynn, should we just make, you know, make them comply with the ten or more at, like, Sandage Park? Or are you, are you thinking of taking that all off and not allowing anybody in the city?
But well, it's part of the same discussion as the skate park and the city park, and so it's public park in the city. So I just wanted to mention that this.
Yeah, and this is just all discussion, this is all discussion.
So, so it's your, it's within your authority. Be clear.
I'm gonna ask Jack a question. Jack, where's the county standing right now? On all of this?
Okay, the counties work differently. Each elected official is in charge of their department, okay? The tax assessor clogs down at eleven o'clock Wednesday. No other department has done that yet. They are, I don't know if they got on the website yet, bringing something on the website, recommending everybody to call before you come, there could be all the problem on the phone, and payments, what I said, she, I'm not sure what Linda did, I saw her earlier today at a CAD meeting. Not sure what Linda did as far as payments go, but I do know the club, there's nobody in the building right now. They may change that start Monday.
Is it gonna be all county buildings or?
It's up to the department, it's the sheriff, sheriff, and all the elected officials, they get to do what they want to.
Yes, thank you.
Right, counsel.
I, I think with the man.
Yes.
With the risk of the surfaces, and I, I hate to discourage healthy upper activity, but because we don't have the staff to keep the equipment clean and sanitized, that we at least advise people to, to stay out of both the Sandage Park and the Skate Park. I don't know how enforceable we can make that. And I would like to say limit Vander, Vander City Park to walking activity to county residents, in my opinion.
Yes, Lynn, and as far as the, like, Sandage Park and the Skate Park, we can make them recommendations as well, right? We can recommend and let them know that those are not being cleaned, and then it would be still left up to their discretion if they wanna use it or not. Can we, can we say it as that, or do you wanna do it as a directive?
But do we need to give someone a job, losing their job, cleaning equipment? And it could, like, like Stan's saying, if we have to hire auxiliary staff, then that could be coded appropriately for reimbursement in the future? But, I mean, is that an option, Jay, giving someone a job to sanitize?
I mean, it is, but it's gonna be, I mean, this could turn into be a very detailed job. You got twenty-some-odd concrete tables in the park. We would remove all the wooden tables, we would have to. Then you'd have somebody just constantly going back and forth, and I'm cleaning this table, and someone's going to this table before I can get it cleaned, you know, things like that's gonna, you're gonna run into. So it'd be multiple people.
Do you think you want?
Well, that's basically the point I was gonna make, they go in and disinfect the skate park, and as soon as they go away, somebody comes in, you know, the council's there, so I think people need to do their own sanitary habits and stuff.
Sure.
And that person that's gonna be doing the cleaning is highly exposed. They would have to be somebody that knows proper biohazard safety precautions, how to actually handle things like that. We're just potentially contaminating or exposing one of our employees to something like that.
Okay, I think we should adhere to the ten-person limit at the skate park, and whatever our marshals are able to police in that area, you know, let them do that. But as far as closing the park, yeah, I think we close the park except the foot traffic, and put signage maybe on the pavilions and the playground equipment. But for, as far as closing it off to people outside of the county, I don't see how that, that's gonna be a workable deal, so I think we could leave that off. Once you close it to foot traffic only, I think it's pretty much.
Yes, Jerry.
The bathrooms of the park, should we consider closing those off if we decide to leave the park open?
Do you have an opinion?
Because once again.
Yes.
This.
My opinion, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a matter of putting up signs and expecting people to obey the signs. You've got actually some way to prevent them from touching those surfaces.
Something else we need to discuss is our employees. Should we have to, should we have one, someone come up with this virus and, and laid off for weeks, or whatever it's gonna have to be? Once our employees have used up their sick time and their vacation time, there may be nothing left. They still may have to be isolated because of illness. They still may have to be isolated because the illness does not have any thing coming in. We do have a sick leave pool. And we could potentially tap into that, but, uh, that would take
So I've already provided your staff with the federal guidelines on that, so that's, that's, that's taking care.
And, and I haven't read those guidelines. I would hope that if, if it was
Yeah, the federal government's extending those benefits of this coronavirus related.
And that it wouldn't even have to affect their regular benefits, is that correct?
Yeah, they would still, they would still run out, they're, they're really sick with this. It'll backstop that additionally, it's gonna be compensated.
Only goes wrong.
Right.
Okay.
Um, waiving the credit card fees, late fees and cutoffs. And I guess your staff is already aware of this coding process of that all of those, uh, compensations can be we learned later.
We learned a very valuable lesson after the flood in two thousand and sixteen. Cause we were keeping sloppy records of when we applied for FEMA funds. As we got on further into it, we could have applied for so much more, but we couldn't document it. So that's why it's really urgent that we keep on top of these expenses. And, and not just us, but every business owner too, because there's certain things in place for them. So just be careful. Do, do we need to, um, be specific on how long we're gonna allow them to, uh, for the cutoffs or, or?
During this, during this.
Yeah.
It's gonna extend this.
Oh, okay.
When you extend it, it's going to extend with it.
Okay, I see, I see.
It's part of, that's why we put it in here.
Okay, awesome, okay.
He knows when that authority expires.
And then what is the language, language that we need to include to author, authorize Jay to have authorities that? I mean, do we have to be, how specific do we have to be?
Specific is he's gonna
Jay, do you have any input for us on that?
I would just say, open it up and say, uh, you have the authority to waive, uh, credit card fees, late payments, uh, no cutoffs. And just the general language, I mean, I don't think we need to get into every I T.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I confirmed to him, what else he felt.
Authority with personnel, I mean.
Yes, definitely.
I don't know what the language of it is.
The day-to-day operations.
Yeah, other
Authority with personnel.
Yeah, and staff.
How about general?
City operation oversight.
And the, the federal guidelines on, on personnel handling.
You got that, Jill?
Right.
Somebody's gonna have to make a motion.
Hey, well, they're, they're gonna get all written down.
Can you, can you please tell me what the language needs to be again?
Yeah, so
What you just
So I would authorize the city administrator to utilize federal, uh, federal recommendations and guidelines, personnel. Cause we, there was a directive that we sent out on how to code all that and what's gonna be covered. What is and how to treat, uh, each of those things under the
Utilize federal
Guidelines and recommendations. Cause what they're doing is they're modifying the FEMA rules and everything. So it's not just if you personally are affected.
Personnel.
It, it also is a little bit more expansive than that, as FEMA rules are. FEMA rules apply that if you're caring for another household. What it doesn't allow, cause this question has already come up once, it doesn't allow me, if I'm an employee, to decide, you know what, I'm gonna self-worry and think, cause this is making me very uncomfortable and go home. Doesn't allow that, right? You still have to have some type of medical recommendation, because the reason for that isn't because anybody's trying to, you know, uh, be over, overly, uh, a stickler on all these things, just because we have to know why you think that. Who do you think exposes you to that? Why do you think that you need to do this? Why, you know, it's critical on the community spread angle to know if it's legitimate or not legitimate. Uh, so that's, that's the reason for that. It's already been attempted.
So can we, um, talk about possibly the EDC being able to help some of our businesses? This is what I was thinking.
Is that how applied this, um?
Well, so
I'm, I'm just
I think, I think that I would include something in there as a rec, as a recommendation that that be, that that be, uh, that that program, uh, be explored. Because it has to come back. I mean, it can't, it can't really direct the EDC. I think it's something that everybody would be interested in having that discussion and looking what that program would look like. And they would need to consult with their attorney on what he's saying. On EDCs that I represent, yes, we believe it's an eligible project, uh, to, to provide those loans, not necessarily grants, but loans, just like the SBA, uh, federal levels can provide loans. But that's something they need to decide on their own, but you can include it as a recommendation.
Jay.
Also, I'd like to include that, uh, we're gonna waive any fees and, uh, guidelines on temporary signs for restaurants, businesses, letting people know that there's drive-through or pickup or delivery or anything like that while this is going on.
Will you repeat that?
No.
So it's a way of enforcing of the sign ordinance related to temporary signage advising people to take out and deliver.
Okay.
We've already sorted this through the whole lot with the restaurants and stuff. Yeah, ready, kind of, that's what I Well, come on. We've gone through a lot of items here, yeah, and I wonder if we should be making motions on some of these as we go.
Well, I haven't heard any disagreement yet.
No.
And so, so what, what we'll do though is Jill is taking notes and she's going to, she has the official
I hope so.
She better be. She'll give you the official feedback before you mo, you make your motion. So she can, uh, she can read out each thing that, each of these things that you, that have been stated. And if everybody's in agreement, then you can make your motion if that is read.
May I make the motion to request a five-minute reset?
Yes, you may. Well, why don't we, you don't have to make a motion.
To have a one
Five-minute reset.
Okay, guys, right, uh, until, yeah, twelve twenty-five. So Dan, how are we gonna enforce the ten miles? Oh, we can't talk about it. Okay, sorry. Oh, babe. Okay, that's all.
But I think, uh, we're gonna get it here. And you could consider it an essential service. It's not
Don't touch my stuff.
Doctor, it's an essential service. Drugstores.
A is going to be twelve twenty-five. We can be this city council meeting. Next question, subject, where are we?
Any other fees or, or things that we need to consider waiving at this time?
Jay, anything else?
I, I can't think of anything, like I say. The only other thing would be in the, the sign ordinance for the temporary signs there for restaurants that's
What about disconnects?
Uh, we can waive disconnects. We are waive, waive late fees.
For the duration of
Yeah, my note says suspend cutoffs, late fees, um, and credit card fees. Is that sufficient? Do we need to extend due date at this time?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. That's gonna start causing problems. I think if we leave it at this, waive the, the late fees, disconnect fees like that. We're gonna get it back like Dan says eventually. Now, if we start extending dates, that's where we're gonna run into some issues down the road, I'm afraid.
I think everything would be covered by doing just that. Just not having the disconnects and the late fees. They don't override the due dates.
No.
No, it wouldn't, you say?
Well
No, it doesn't rather the due days, but there's, there's no late fees or cutoffs.
Yeah, so
Okay.
Due days, it's
Indirectly, it overrides them.
Well, if you get to a point where people are in such economic strife that it's difficult to pay a bill.
You can revisit these.
I mean, we, we have in place already a, what do we call it? You know, if you're having trouble paying your loan, there's an agreement that we have people sign that, you know, we can work with that, we can extend that.
Thank you. And did we get some warning for, recommend EDC explore the disaster relief?
What?
The thing I'm not real clear on after all of this, I've got the whole park for walking gates to rain clothes, all that. But I'm not really sure what the consensus was on the skate park or on sandwich park. Cause y'all kind of went around and Glenn may, wanted to keep it with ten people or less, but nobody really
No, I was just gonna say, that was my thing, just enforce the ten-limit rule.
Right, and so that's the case, you wouldn't necessarily do anything specific to those parks if you're not being strict to the, the guidelines.
I, I agree that that's, uh, maybe not the best decision because of the surfaces and potential for exposure. But I don't know what the people feel.
Sure.
Do we want to discuss, uh, like the skate park, completely shutting that down versus the park looking it open for walking?
So you're discussing?
Now hearing, you know, how the kids are and everything when they're skateboarding, I don't feel comfortable leaving that open at all.
Well, again, we're gonna run into the same problem if we leave the park open for traffic. It's to say, people aren't gonna stop, sit down at the tables and stuff, so.
Unless we were to
Patrol.
Barricade, barricade those areas, put something up that would have to be remained. Think that would suffice.
I don't agree with that. I, I don't agree with doing that. I think it's just gonna be an overkill if people get around if they want to. Again, leave the skate park open, ten-limit rule, you know, just enforce it as best we can in the same way. Cause once the weather, if the weather starts turning a little bit warmer, how we're gonna keep people going in, go swimming and stuff? If we have, just, I mean, all we can do is try to do something basic in hopes that everyone, you know, uses common sense.
Sure.
So did I hear correctly that you say leave them all open and just enforce it in our person rule? So
Glenn, I, I wanna agree with Glenn on that. I, I would like to maybe put up a sign that notifies the people that we are not cleaning those areas. And, you know, they may wanna do that themselves, but, you know, uh, I would agree with leaving them open. And maybe putting a sign that, that notifies citizens that they're, you know, they're skating at their own risk or, or something like that, I don't know.
But you meant by foot traffic only though, correct, Glenn, not opening the gates to the park?
That's correct, yeah.
Can, Tony was saying something, can
I would just like to say that it's not at their own risk, it's at the risk of our community. You have to keep in mind, it's not their risk. If they're walking in, unknown that they're contaminated and they contaminate a surface, then everybody else after them is at risk. So by putting something up that with signage that says, enter your own risk or do this at your own risk, it's not the people that are contaminating that you're talking to, it's the ones that are coming behind them. That's my, that's my opinion, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask her?
Sure.
Do you see any other option other than just closing it down? Do you think that barricading or however we might go about it would suffice? Do you think that would work?
I think limiting any kind of people to sit down or to areas of congregation, you know, keep people walking, that kind of stuff. I mean, it's not, I mean, it, it lives in the air. Um, you know, the open air, it's, you know, is minimal. It's, you're more susceptible in a closed room with it to live in the air. But, I mean, the skate park, the sandwich park, any, anything that where you sit, touch, you know, where you stop is gonna be a greater risk to the next person that comes along, so.
So once again, do you feel that, uh, it should be closed completely or?
If you're really, I truly asking what I would do, I would put the signs back up that says, do not enter the park, it's unlawful. And put out signs and stuff to our local community that says, we are closing the park to outside access. However, if you are a local county residence, we will not bother you if you are merely doing your daily walk and you are not congregating or sitting or, you know, that kind of stuff. And put that information out to the, to the county residents that they are able to go in where, but market to where nobody has access. Um, so that you, you minimize your policing aspect of it. Um, and hopefully people, you know, and
Again, now we're talking about the whole park, we're talking about the disco courts where there's benches there, there's restrooms there that you're gonna report bodies, uh, the baskets where the disc goes, people don't be touching those, so. To go further than what I said earlier, basically what we're gonna have to do is just shut the park down completely. And I don't wanna do that.
Glenn?
Well, I'm starting to agree with everybody else on maybe shutting the skate park and sandwich park uh, to, you know, access to that, uh, maybe putting a tape or a sign that says, you know, whatever courage we need to say about that. I would like to see our city park still open to, uh, walking traffic. But I would also like for us to maybe put a notice out to say that it's, it's just for county and city. I mean, yes, we're gonna have other people come in, but if we at least put that notice that says just for, you know, at this time until April sixteenth, for county and city, I, I would like to see that happen as well. You know, I don't know how backed up karma is over there at Bender's signs, but we may, may not be able to get the signage like immediately. So we've gotta get out through, through social media of the
Yeah, yeah.
disinformation, because we may not have anything right two or three weeks. Well, the city can put out a, sorry, thank you. Yes, Glenn?
Well, I'm getting a little confused now. So we're gonna limit to just a county resident, so if they're infected, we don't care. But, you know, we don't want infected people from outside the county to use it. It has to be one rule applies to all, is, that's what I'm saying.
I, I know it's a real difficult decision to make, but what I've been, you know, saying all along is we've been in the world's longest spring break. And people have been in the city from all over the world. I don't see what it's different it's going to make whether we restrict it to vendor and county. I, I just don't think it's gonna do it again.
Yes, Jerry?
Understanding that we need to, that the purpose of all this is to limit exposure, contain containment, et cetera. As much as I wanna keep some of these things open, the more I'm thinking about it and with Tony's feedback too. We're both on the same page there. But once again, as much as I would hate to, I think that the safest thing for the community is to prohibit access to any of those facilities.
I think you have a consensus, essentially, I mean.
That one, that one you might need to have an inner motion on, yeah. And, and vote on that before you vote on the entire, because I don't know that I have very consensus.
Glenn?
If that is consensus, the rest of the council, I would not vote against it. I would support their decision.
Yes, Jerry?
Time for a motion.
Go ahead.
We might have changed the wording up some, but
I think we need to have the warning.
Can you help us with that, Dan? Can you help us with that, Glenn?
Let me clarify, what motion are you preparing to make?
I'm preparing to make a motion to prohibit access to any of the cities.
Run the parks then.
Here's, here's how I recommend it. So what's your opinion is an ordinance? Okay, so your motion, any motion that is made is to approve, did you, do you have a number on it yet or no?
Yes. 373.
So you're approving ordinance number 373?
Exhibit B.
And with that motion, you are adding to exhibit B. There you go. And so that's where these other things can come in.
I didn't hear that last one.
Adding to exhibit B.
Well, the, the other change that you need to make is that to expire April 16th. At midnight, or no, don't do midnight. 11:59.
To expire when?
11:59 PM on April 16th.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention, Easter is on April 9th, right, this year? I think Easter is April, April 12th. So what is the 12th? That Easter is on April 12th, so we won't be allowing people into the park then, only walking.
Well, until we decide otherwise.
Yes, that's right. So a, as was already stated, the governor's order is going to expire before this. If changes are made in that order, those are gonna supersede anything you have on the books that are stricter. And if they are more lenient, then you can have a meeting anytime between his order goes into effect and Easter to, to conform yours or repeat them. So I, I wouldn't be too overly concerned about that at this point in time.
All right. Ray?
I don't know.
Do you want Jill to read back her list?
Yeah.
Just, you want her to read those back?
Um, city park will remain open for walking purposes only with the gates to remain closed, signage and tables and equipment blocked off. Next point, authorize city administrator to utilize federal guidelines and recommendations on personnel and day-to-day operations. EDC to explore expansion of local disaster relief programs, waive temporary signs, rules and permits. Utility department to suspend all late fees, cutoffs and credit card fees and, or payments over the film. And then I'm at motion approving ordinance 373, adding exhibit B with these recommendations. And I still don't know where we are on the other parts.
I didn't hear anything about City Hall.
I thought we were letting, leaving that to the administrator.
Okay, that's cool.
Under the day-to-day guidelines of operation.
Long as you let it.
Item two, exhibit B, item two, adding until April 16th, 2020 at 11:59 PM.
Yes.
Um, and, now you're right.
Yes.
So the city park. Item A, what's it? May include bicycle and horse traffic. Open to foot, bicycle and horse traffic.
That's them two, you guys, not me.
I thought it was to close, I thought it was the.
So you can't ride your bike in?
Well, if it's closed, it's closed, whether it be bicycle, foot or horse. I mean, that's what it was doing.
Yeah, hang on. Clarification, we're gonna limit it to.
Walking purposes only is what y'all said.
I know.
Yeah. But to horses and bicycles.
Close.
Pedestrians. Oh, go ahead, Jerry.
My discussion, or, I, my discussion was to completely close them. Because if we can't control access to the tables and everything else, then once again, it comes back to the potential for exposures increase. And we're not gonna be able to limit that, that exposure otherwise without totally closing the parks. That's why I was stressing, I hate to do that.
You know.
I really, really hate to do that.
I don't think that was a consensus.
Yeah.
It was the best, okay.
I've been fighting this for a while, folks, y'all know that. If we take the precautions that council is talking about, we inform, we gotta give people a chance to, we can't use their own judgment of common sense. You know, I know that it's a bad time to say that, but, you know, well, you don't know that so-and-so had already been there and gotten sick. Well, fine, then don't go. Jerry?
Yeah, and that's fine for those people, but once again, those are the people that are gonna contaminate the rest of us. The other, everyone else. And it's the same reason that the governor had come up out with these declarations. He knows that people aren't gonna do that on their own. And if you look at the number of younger people that are, they're not gonna abide by. So the only way to control that, in my opinion, is not provide access to any of those facilities.
Yes, Glenn.
Again, this, just like our everyday life is going, if I decide to go to the post office, you know, when I get back in my truck, I have my stuff that I put on my hands, sanitize my hands. If I go to the store, same thing, I get back in, I sanitize my hands. You know, we, we cannot cover every base, there, there's no way.
Joe, so Rebecca, you would like me to change that to city park will remain open for walking, bike riding and horseback riding purposes only with gates to remain closed. Signage, tables and equipment to be blocked off.
I, I don't necessarily wanna add the blocking off of anything. I think it's enough to say you can walk through here, you can ride your bike through here, you can ride your horse through here. And if, if the marshals are observing any other activity taking place, then at that point they enforce, you know, at, at their discretion.
So is that a consensus to take the tables and equipment blocking off, off? Anybody?
If you're only just gonna vote, let's get a vote, get on, on this item, this item specifically.
So.
Yes, Glenn, I'm sorry. I, I feel like maybe we should block off sandage park and the skate park. But I would like to see the city park remain as we're proposing it, keep the gates locked, allow walking traffic, bikes and, and horses. I'm only going by what I've been doing this week with my own grandson. We're not stopping at any of the tables. I'm walking along with him, riding bikes. There's no signs at the park now, they've removed those where you're not supposed to cross over the cable. So, I mean, I don't know why we couldn't leave the city park open to, and, and, and do the 10, the 10 people gathering. Still have something to say about.
Okay, wait a second, our state parks are still open. They're closing the visitor centers, that's what I'm looking at right now, that's what I'm looking at, state parks. They're making, same thing we're doing, they're paring down services and the employees that are involved. But they're physically still allowing, yeah.
Yes, Jill.
Like Dan said, y'all need to go ahead and make a vote because we're just going around and around on the same thing about the city park and then let's move on to the state park and the other part. Whether we're gonna keep it open for those things, block off the stuff or not. So Rebecca, if you wanna make your motion and then y'all make a vote.
This is just for this, this isn't the vote on the ordinance.
So do I need to identify where this is going in the ordinance as you?
So we know where it's going in the ordinance, I just, we don't have consensus on how you're dealing with your parks.
Okay.
So put it to a vote and whatever the majority says is what the consensus is.
Individual parks at a time?
I don't care how you do it.
Okay, so I'm, may I make a motion?
Yes, Glenn.
Vendera City Park will remain open to foot, bicycle and horse traffic, period.
Second.
A second.
Any further discussion on this?
So if we do this, that means disc golf, skate park or something else is closed.
We haven't addressed that yet. This is related to the city park.
Okay, okay, well, let's take the skate park out of it because the disc golf is part of the city park. So if it's closed, unless you wanna add an exception for the. There will be no disc golf, what, a little bit of playground equipment we have and all the facilities that are there is, is closed except for foot traffic, horse, bicycles. I just wanna, I wanna be clear of what I voted on.
Okay. In the language that I used, that the park would be, remain open to foot, bicycle and horseback traffic. Is that, is that not specific enough?
I don't think in this instance it is.
Okay.
So it's be very specific on this consensus motion.
Just period city park, because skate park is, I'm not saying part of.
Disc golf.
Is, disc golf is a part of the city park. I wonder.
I, I, I don't think that that is going to get what you want because Glenn and others may still not know what's open or closed. Can I go in there and fish, can I go in there and play disc golf, can I go in here and do this? So just, if y'all are gonna leave it open, just leave it open. Whatever you're gonna do, let's have it in your motion so we know what everybody agrees with.
Okay, so now.
Because, because Will has to enforce it, so he needs clarity.
Okay.
Jerry?
I wanna make sure that we're clear on this. Are we gonna do anything if we were to vote to leave the park out, the city park? Are we gonna do anything to prohibit access to such as the tables and the playground equipment and stuff?
We're talking about signage, I guess caution tape, I don't really know what council wants.
Because that'll make a difference in how I decide. Or could make a difference.
Glenn? I think Rebecca, in your motion, if you include to keep the gate closed, I think that, that's important to keep the gate closed.
I'm, I'm working on an amendment.
For access to pedestrian access points only. We do have those all around the park. Yes, Glenn?
Then, be legal. In order to amend this motion, there has to be a motion to amend the motion.
She can withdraw her motion and start over. I mean, that's, that's fine too. Understanding, folks, this is, this is a consensus motion, this is not a final motion on anything. This is a motion to make sure y'all all know when we, when we have a motion on the full ordinance, what is going to be included in that. It's just a, this is a housekeeping procedural matter to make sure that everybody understands. Too often, when these discussions happen, nobody knows at the end what they actually voted. This one seems to be a sticking point, one to be specific.
Um, so first of all, I will withdraw my motion.
And your second?
And I, okay, so, and I would like the floor to make a motion, I'm just working on, on the changes to include everything that people are concerned about.
Yes, Glenn?
Yeah, when we get the motion on the floor and get it seconded, while we get into discussion, I would like to hear Will's take on, because like Dan said, he's the one, or his department's gonna have to enforce it, so. If he has an issue, then we need to get that addressed.
Do we have, yes, do we have to wait for the motion to open that up for discussion?
Give my opinion. It would make it easier on him.
Oh, wait, Will, you want to hear the motion?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I apologize. Okay. Vendera City Park will remain open to foot, bicycle and horse traffic. Activities in city park are limited to walking, bicycling and horseback riding through the park. Congregation of any kind is prohibited. Gate will remain closed. Pedestrian access points remain open. Disc golf course is closed.
Where are we closing this golf?
Well, same, sorry, and that was the end.
When you get a second, then you can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, Glenn, second, listen.
For the same reason that we're discussing closing access to any surface area, like the parks, the playground equipment and anything else like Glenn mentioned, it's a, it's a potentially, it's a surface for potential virus. That's why. Because we're.
I haven't played disc golf, I just have that idea of what goes on there. Is there any surfaces there that they can touch? I haven't even walked through there.
The goals, that's good.
I mean, is there, is it a routine part of playing disc golf to touch something?
There is benches and then there's the, the goals or holes, whatever you wanna call them, that have a frame and chain which you'd have to come in contact with eventually.
And the idea is to allow people to walk, bicycle and horseback ride. Glenn?
I would prefer, since it basically involves foot traffic, that the disc golf remain open. And because what limited, what are you gonna have is that the porta can and the baskets, which is normally just reach in the basket and get your disc out of it. But you're gonna have the same problem, people are walking along, they go through the cable areas, they're gonna touch the hose. So it's gonna be just incidental contact with things. And I would prefer that the disc golf remain open because, again, it's just basically foot traffic.
Jerry?
I would like to request that you amend that motion to also leave the disc golf open. If you can leave the park open.
Glenn, and I would, I would like Rebecca to include fishing. To allow, allow people to fish in the city park if they want to fish in the city park. Jamie has something to say?
I don't know that we can stop them from fishing.
Right.
I mean, I may be wrong, Dan can correct me, but I.
Dan has our opinion at this point.
I like to, I would like to include that.
Okay.
Glenn?
Do we need to include closing the restrooms now at this point, or we discussed that earlier?
If that needs to be specific. So.
That goes in and in was asking about earlier, we're gonna put something like, if we do decide to leave these open, are we gonna put some kind of physical barrier, so to prevent them from access? Whether it be to the playground equipment, park benches or the bathrooms.
Batteries and floating porta cans.
Can I, can I get your opinion on the caution tape before I make a motion? Do you think we need to wrap the?
It, it can hurt, I, I don't know that it'll stop anybody on the meeting tables. It'll probably just wait the playground equipment used.
And does, does that really need to be included or is that something that they can, the public works department can do under the authorization of the city administrator as they see necessary?
Would be up to the administrator of how they barricade it.
Right, right, so if, if that's okay, I'd like to make that further discretion on how to do that.
Glenn? I think. Dan was saying that we need to be specific.
Yeah, if you wanna limit access, I mean, she's saying barricade and that's how they choose to do it.
Okay.
I don't know how she can do that, it's still, it's still barricading, it's still limiting access. I think the whole, the whole key as a parent is that if I see caution tape on equipment, I'm not letting my child on the foot for whatever reason.
Okay.
Makes you think twice.
Yeah.
What's that?
Before they touch anything.
Okay.
So, may I please amend my motion?
Yes, you may.
So I'd like to amend my motion and please strike the part about the. So I'd like to amend my motion, um, and please strike the part about the disc golf course being closed. Please add restroom closures. Please add barricading. Equipment. Um, picnic tables, pavilion.
Just in public access to the equipment or something, there's, other than.
Is that sufficient, can I pause there?
Is that gonna cover it then? Thank you. And now I have a second, yes, Jerry.
Does it have to be the same person?
No.
No.
Not for this, not for this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to amend my amended motion. Please, under, under activities, um, are limited to, please add fishing.
Thank you, thank you, never mind, Jerry. Second?
My second.
All right. Any further discussion on city park and the golf disc, or your disc golf course? Okay, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed, so the part has been decided.
Now that does not cover standard part or.
No, that's only our city park. So now we have sandage and we have the skate park. Or you want to do that? Yes, Glenn.
I'd like to make a motion to keep the skate park open and. Possible signage at the discretion of the city administrator and the public works director, limiting the congregation to ten people.
My second. Second. Have a second?
I second.
Lynn, second, okay, discussion. All right, all in favor? Okay, Glenn and Lynn are in favor, all opposed? Rebecca and Jerry are opposed?
No, I didn't mean that, I didn't.
He's talking like about it.
Are you, are you in timeout, or are you ready to vote?
Timeout.
Okay, I'm called.
It's been called and made.
All in favor? Let's do it again. Are we recalling votes? So we're fixing to go forward, all opposed? All right, we got the toss, in that case, I get, uh, Jerry and Rebecca will vote, in that case, I get to vote, and I vote for it to be open, so.
Which is made.
Sandy pork?
I, I guess it. Would follow suit with the skate park.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm not in favor of closing access to outdoor.
Activity.
Things, so that's where I stand on it.
So may I ask a question, if, if the city administrator, he would have it in his purview to post, should we get signs made? You know, it is advised to avoid contact with services, or, I don't know, it, yeah, okay. And, and given that it is a county-owned park, do you think it's really necessary to make even a statement about it?
So until the county acts, you're the sole authority on health and safety code, uh, if you wanna do it in form of a recommendation, you can do so. But it is their property, so regardless of what you do, I don't know that you're gonna have authority to go posting signs on the property, so, but you do have authority over.
Given that we just kind of opened this idea of recommendation for exploration, can we go back to the skate park, skate park?
That's your prop, that's your property, that.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
But. In terms of making a recommendation that people avoid using it.
Yeah, so that, you don't have to go back to the skate park for that, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the direction.
Do that.
Yeah, so you administer, I mean, I think that, you've already said that these recommendations that you're gonna have for people, that you're gonna place on the website, on signs and things such as that.
That was part of my motion.
Yeah.
I apologize, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. May I make a motion then, in that case, that sandage park will remain open?
Second? Second, then second, discussion? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed, thank you.
And, and so now, what are we gonna hear from Will, did you have anything on any of that at this point?
I don't have any problems enforcing this, it's clear enough, and so will I, city park's open to foot, bike and horse traffic, the restroom's closed, and the barricade, the equipment, um, congregation's prohibited. No, disc golf course is open.
And fishing is allowed.
Fishing is allowed, got that, yeah.
You'll let us know how, how that's going, and we need to adjust it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Okay.
So was that the only outstanding issues, everything else there was consensus on?
I do believe.
On the, okay, you want me to go through them again?
You don't have to read all the parts of.
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm gonna get that off the tape. Authorized city administrator to utilize federal guidelines and recommendations on personnel and day-to-day operation. Everybody, you good with that?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
EDC to explore, or recommendation to EDC to explore expansion of a local disaster relief program. Yes? Uh, waive temporary sign rules and permits for the businesses that are having service industry?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, utility department will suspend late fees, cutoffs and credit card fees for payments over the phone.
Discretion of the city administrator?
Not just over the phone, no.
No, I mean, do I?
Credit card fees over the phone.
Whatever.
Oh.
You have to discretion.
I think we were asked to be specific about that, Glenn, am I right, Dan?
Well, I didn't think there was confusion on that part, I mean, I think y'all were giving the city administrator discretion in several categories, and that was more.
So it's to suspend late fees, cutoffs and waive credit card fees for payments, for all payments?
But what the discretion y'all gave, Jay, was in that there's a system that they would like to do it rather than taking the fee off the top, as in reimbursing to the account.
Right.
I think that was the intent of what she was reading, that y'all were giving him discretion on those, when they're making those payments over the top.
Right. I'm good with that. Okay, so if everybody's good with that, Dan, now do they make their motion to approve the ordinance?
Did, did, did you need to include that we're gonna be closing that front office?
That's in the day-to-day operations that falls under, okay. Okay.
Yes, those are all the changes to exhibit D, so your motion would be to approve the ordinance number such and such. With the amendments as read of the city secretary.
You didn't read, um, exhibit B, item two. But you got that in there, right?
Yeah, for the. To continue until April 16th, 2020 at 11:59 PM.
Does the order need to be read in its entirety under the motion?
No, just the ordinance number.
Okay, may I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 373. With amendments to section two as stated, and amendments to section seven as stated.
Second? Jerry, second, discussion? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed, for the 373.
So is that all we need to do, Dan?
Sure.
I hope I didn't miss this, did we, was there anything we need to do further on the interlocal agreements with other cities?
That's gonna come to a future agenda.
That's correct, if that's something that you would like to explore, I've already provided it to your city administrator, and, uh, you can get that on a future agenda, after he reaches out with his colleagues in your surrounding communities, super.
Okay, let's move on real quickly, number five is, uh, request by council. Request by council to place items on future agenda, I think we've got several already in the works, if you have anything specific, Jerry?
I, I believe this might have been covered, I just wanna make sure. Discussion, possible action to assist businesses and meeting payroll for their employees by utilizing, utilizing EDC funds and any other funds that may be available.
We will shoot for a meeting on April the second, we've got a lot of things that really, you know. Should we shoot it for meeting on April second?
Sixteenth, isn't it?
Well, our first regular meeting is scheduled for April.
Yeah, April second will be our next meeting.
Okay.
If we have it.
Okay.
Or if we go tell a.
So was that something that's gonna go on the next?
It can go in that agenda, yes, it can, but let's see how much, we've got a lot of things that get to, so not delaying it, unless it's absolutely necessary. Unless EDC had enough time to get together and have some sort of recommendation, so I don't think we need to, I'll get it on as second if we can, Rebecca.
I, I would just think if anything, we might just need to do a budget adjustment if the EDC should have a. A recommendation for a plan or a program.
I think they're already working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Check Tony had her hand in.
Two weeks ago, we contacted Monty to watch the games and changes to type B EDCs that we could do to support our local community, and so he's been, there's, like Dan said earlier, there's really, I don't know. They haven't gotten us yet, as far as what we can do, he's, he's given a couple of options, the loans was one of them. Promotions, but, you know, we went through the promotions early in the year, and so that, we don't have a lot in that account. Um, and that's the one where it's mandated, where it's 10% of our budget, and we can't go over that regardless of what we want, so, um. Those two are the two options on the table right now, and he's supposed to be getting us again, so I think it's a little premature until we get information from him, and for whatever reason to congregate otherwise.
Good.
We've, we're having a lot of discussion here over future, I thought this was for. Future agenda items.
But I think that goes to rationalization of why it does or does not, or when it should or when it cannot, sort of thing, so. Announcements, ladies and gentlemen? I'm gonna go to the front toilet paper. Return, then we're supposed to return. Then second.
Thank you.
Y'all going to, is your plan to move the telephone meetings?
Yeah, let me try to record all of it.